Call this meeting to an end with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Hill.
Here.
Hill, here. Meck. Meck absent. Carr. Carr absent. Cantal O'Zelman.
Here.
Cantal O'Zelman, here. Slattery. Slattery absent. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker, here. Johnson. Johnson absent. Alexander. Alexander absent. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here. Costas. Costas, here. Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly.
Here.
Holly, here. Farrenwald.
Here.
Farrenwald, here. Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We move on to presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of October the 8th, 2019.
And I do want to make an announcement that because of our computer issues for the past two weeks, I was not able to get the minutes prepared, so we'll have to deal with those next time.
Okay. Want to do the next thing? Then we'll just open for public comment.
Hi, I'm Rachel Roscoe, part of Neighborhood Y237. I'm also the president of the library trustee. I came, well, a couple reasons. One reason I came because Anna's gonna tell you a little bit about what the library is doing so far and what we have plans for the rest of the year. But also, something else was brought to my attention. I don't know if it's true or if it's in the plans, but I was told that it's a collaboration of city officials and state officials. The reason why they haven't allowed the Libby, the people, to get permits for the Libby building is because the plans of some people in Blue Island, city official and state official, was to make that building a place where you could grow marijuana. Now, personally, I came from Chicago. I came from areas where it was drugs. And even though it's supposed to be medical marijuana, it's only a stair step towards things, okay? Whether it's legal or illegal, I don't want either one of them here. I can prove what that person told me is true, but as of today, October the 22nd, I'm presenting this to you. Now, you might be part of the problem, you might be part of the solution, but I'm telling you right now, if this is what the plans are, because I don't understand why you wouldn't let them get the permits. So therefore, they're talking about suing Blue Island. All they, people do is sue us because our city officials allow people who work for us to break the law. And then we have to pay for it. And that's not fair to us. So I'm not gonna ask you one by one, do you know about it? But as of today, I want everyone else to know that this is a possibility to be in some people's plans. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
My name is Carol DePace Green. How's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
I was hoping that you, the hospital is now officially closed. So we really shouldn't be good, but I really do understand, Ms. Rita, I might have pulled the trigger just a little too. So I apologize if I misled you in any way. Could be my fault. I'm here tonight regarding a number of issues because the stakes are high. Investigate and follow the objectionable, dangerous, and disturbing evidence of what's going on in Blue Island. Metro South's medical center closure was unanimously okayed by the state regulators today. Restore Blue Island Party members voted to add more costs to the $1 million-plus Blue Island spends on legal services, adding Montana and Welch and Sergio Acosta, even though Blue Island residents, taxpayers, and the voters they represent objected to those expenditures and said no. Sergio Acosta has no subpoena power, cannot swear anyone in under oath, and collect any evidence regarding G-Pass, the Tahos, or anything else. Evidence collected regarding G-Pass, the Tahos, has all been distributed to the previous and the current Alderman. Anybody who didn't get any emails from me or is missing something, let me know right away. I will be sure to resend it so that you absolutely positively have it. Information regarding Blue Island cybersecurity issues and concerns was discussed months ago and repeatedly, and those issues really went ignored. The Blue Island City Council has a history of failure and unwillingness to send contracts to bid, implementing contracts before full city council vote, such as the garbage contract, computer software, and medical insurance. It's been determined based upon rainwater flow, alley-street puddling, water not directed into rain gardens, sewers that are above grade, that an engineer was not on-site to ensure proper roadway, alley, or curb grading. The Blue Island Public Works Water Department should have insured bricks, curb material, roadway material did not end up in the sewer before signing off on the project for payment for the $1.5 million Longwood-Washington-Vincennes grant project. A special meeting of municipal services committee was requested and is needed for a corrective action plan, including timelines for completion from Candace Carr, municipal Chair of Municipal Services, to quickly set goals, objectives, timeframes, tasks, clearly identifying who is responsible, and get everything corrected and completed on the Longwood-Washington-Vincennes project before the ground freezes. The project was discussed in the Finance Committee, Municipal Services, and Community Development Committee with Eric Alvarez, Robinson Engineering, present. It's been determined, everyone was paid. Everybody got paid. But things are not the way that they should be. And we need a comprehensive corrective action plan put together. Kevin Donahue, Chair of the Finance Committee, voted to further delay long-term Blue Island City Hall cybersecurity concerns and computer updates due to limited municipal funds. We've heard forever, we don't have the money. But we seem to have money for other things. And three days later, the computer system was hacked with ransomware. Blue Island seems to have nearly emptied the city treasury and made no effort to accomplish anything of value, ignored and done nothing to fill the holes in the alleys and the streets, and little to resurface streets as Blue Island taxpayers and your constituents have requested. No doubt, you all know it. The Finance Committee Chair, Kevin Donahue, along with Alderman Alexander, Bellato, Johnson, Clinker, voted to approve a plum water deal with posing at $5 per thousand gallons, even though the deal generates little or no profit for Blue Island. The DNR granting permission for Blue Island to sell water was requested from the committee chair, the Blue Island clerk, and a conversation was had with our city attorney who is here tonight. Blue Island does not seem to have a copy of the document requested. Blue Island voters and residents and taxpayers have said no. We ran into this very same problem, an issue with Jawa. We don't need to go down the same rabbit hole again and then be held accountable because the steps that should have been taken were not proper, were not. And now we'll end up possibly with, you know, a potential water buyer, somebody who wants to buy water from us pissed off because they can't get water. At the last Finance Committee meeting, Donahue, Alexander, and Bellato voted to approve an $8 million project with Robinson Engineering to repaint the Thornton Water Tower, for new water meters, and a water system upgrade in the northeast corner of Blue Island. There does not appear to be a fail-safe plan. That's a humongous problem. Every community that's tried to upgrade their water system all ended up with what? An elevated lead level. I am going to look in the book to see if I can find the fail-safe plan because if Robinson Engineering can't get a $1.5 million project right and take corrective action, and two years later, we're still talking about this, do not move forward with an $8 million plan to go play with our water system and then afterwards, we're standing around here trying to figure out, what are we going to do? Because we have lead in the water that's going into the homes of Blue Island residents. We're not gonna have it. It should not be allowed to happen. Did anybody look in the book and see a fail-safe plan in there at all? I see deer eyes in the headlights. I don't hear anybody jumping in and saying, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, don't worry, Ms. Green, we got this. We are not gonna poison the residents." Restore Blue Island Party, Blue Island Independent Party, and our single last-elected independent, do not move forward with this crap and poison. The Restore Blue Island Party and the Blue Island Independent Party will go down in flames having poisoned the water system in Blue Island. Put it on record, I said it. You guys will vote for this stuff? And you should not, clearly should not, because you're missing so much information. Mayor Vargas, thank you for letting me speak tonight and letting me know that I can look in the book, because that's what I'm gonna be looking for, is the fail-safe plan. While the Restore Blue Island Party and Blue Island Independent Party have delivered plenty of bad and horrible stuff, understand, you've not been serving the people, you've not been doing what the taxpayers and the people want. This is about long-term avoidable difficulties for Blue Islanders. All that you see is exactly what the Restore Blue Island Party has voted and stands for. In closing, I would tell you this. Stay low, running a zigzag, because it's definitely an ugly mess that you've made. And there's more to come, I'm sure.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mrs.
Honorable Mayor Vargas and all of you council members. I am Nancy L. Thompson. I've been a citizen of this town for 60 years. I'm eight years old. And I want to tell you about something that I'm very emotional about. Now, hold on, break down and cry. I am appalled about this lawsuit. Sergeant Harrow, what this man went through with people that I respected very highly. This man was persecuted by members of his own police department members. He was a member of this police department 24 years, and he wanted to bring closure to the murder of a kid. This case went on 13 years. Being a mother, I have two sons. I carried two babies and gave birth. If this had happened to one of my children, I have two grandchildren, my heart would be broken. This lady stood before another mayor, Ploken, and cried for justice for her child, and she never got it. It took 13 years for some closure for the death, no accident, murder, of a kid. And we had respectable people suppress the evidence. That's why I'm so enraged. Why in hell, excuse me, did this go on in this town? We had people like state-represented Bob Rita, John Rita, Deputy Chief Cornell, Rains, our attorney, her husband Welch, Contreras, Sis, and the cream of the crop, Alderman Carr. What in hell did she have to be involved in this? Suppressing evidence. Every damn one of them ought to be in jail. Everyone, Mayor, excuse my language, people, everyone involved, you council members, Bob Rita, John Rita, and everybody else involved, should spend time in jail like every common criminal. They suppressed, they harassed this man. They wanted him to commit suicide or whatever. They didn't give a damn. Two suspensions, 90 days at a time, and then come to the point to fire him. He has to go to the whistleblowers in South Suburban and sue the damn city. We are gonna pay this. Why don't those people pay it? Hell, they got money. Bob Rita's rich. Go in his pocket and pay the damn suit. Why are the citizens paying, Mr. Mayor? Why? And their asses ought to be in jail, every damn one of them. And I cry for the heart of this woman. She suffered 13 damn years because of the negligence of the people in this town. What has it come to here? This is not a town. This is a third-world country. Is this Putin or we in Russia? I thought it was the United States of America, the land of the free and home of the brave. A woman who suffered 13 years for some closure in her baby's death, and we had this rotten police department with these people in there suppressing the evidence so it would never be revealed. What in hell is that? Tell me. And excuse my language, because I don't use this language, but I'm so enraged about this. I hope every citizen in this town get a copy of that suit. I want every citizen to read. You paid these people with your tax money, and they did this to another man in this town who served and protected. He should be a hero. You should stand here and put a ribbon on him, Mayor, for what he did, the tenacity that he had to persevere to get through this. And the money is costing us. The money is costing us. And we had an Alderman who said Carr, Carr him, who harassed LaSalle King to the point that he had to retire. He stood at this podium and he told everybody what she did from day one. Why is Candace Carr still an Alderman? She went to Harrow's lawyer and harassed Mr. Harrow's lawyer. All of Mayor Horvath, Kerry Horvath, you gave this information that the lawyer called you and said you harassed him. Why would she call the lawyer of a person who has a suit against us? What kind of authority does Candace Carr have? She's the harasser? Is she the what man for Bob Rita? See, I only know three people in here that are Bob Rita's little puppets. That's Alden Bellato, Alden Kevin Donahue, and Candace Carr. They carry out his orders like he's a master plaster. He's just a common man who, I hope he puts on his pants one leg at a time as every other common man. But the only thing that makes Bob Rita different, he has a title. And with that title, there are certain things he can pull and do because he has this power. No one should be on a pedestal and praised as a god. There's only one God you should serve, that is Jesus Christ. And when a man becomes a god, something needs to happen to him because he can't, you can't serve two gods. Don't try to serve two gods, or you're going to hell with that one who's leading you. And all this stuff is going on. You knew, Alderman, think for yourself. You are here to serve the people. You're not here to serve Bob Rita. You're not here for him to tell you how to vote. Stop letting Bob Rita tell your life. Who's gonna lead you? You lead somebody, they're gonna lead you in hell. Be careful how you get there. When you say all roads are wrong, there'll be all roads to hell, too. And when the one is burning, his ass is burning, he can't put it out your ass when it burns because he'd be too busy putting his own ass out. Excuse me, and my language, and thank you, Mayor, for the privilege. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sarah. I live at, do I need to say my address?
No.
No? I have a question about the, I know that the computer system is down. We are wondering about our bills for our water. Are our credit card information and all that secure with this breach? For those of us that pay credit card or with checks?
Yeah, Smart Fusion is a web-based program. None of your data is stored on our servers at all.
Okay, so we shouldn't have any issue?
No, no.
Okay. We do know that we've dropped off, we've already dropped off checks prior to the breach, and it's not been run yet.
No.
We will not occur any late fees? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to address a couple of issues that I've observed because I represent a number of people that have come to me and asked, since I have a lot of friends here, to open up businesses in Blue Island, while making plans to attend your meeting here tonight and at the same time anticipate some of the rhetoric that was to possibly come from the selected few people here. I further made a conscious decision to address a few points that continue to trouble not only me, but others here in town. It seems to me there is a troubling pattern of what I deem as immature behavior and actions that are systematically being brought up in both the city council and some of your committee meetings here in Blue Island. Committees that meet to carry out the work, and I say again, the work of the city of Blue Island are being stumbled upon. A charge from a small number of individuals that in some way, that the meetings of the duly-elected city council in some way are illegal, and there is to come some yet to be named identified course of retribution against the legally-elected members sitting here facing me, elected by the people behind me. You continue to hear what's going to happen, but yet, where is the law? One person saying the law has been broken doesn't mean it's been broken. What's going on? You hear these thoughts, talk, statement, unsubstantiated statements that spring forth from some people, but yet, they're not an attorney, they're not in the judicial branch, they're just common people like me making a statement. As I like to say in my meetings, talking loud and really saying nothing. Taking up the time of this council from which I've been sitting back here watching and listening, there are so many problems that are up, and yet, there's this finger-pointing which accomplishes nothing, talking loud, saying nothing. We come back again in two weeks, and it's repeated continually. It's being repeated, naming people, accusing people, but yet, where's the proof?
In the lawsuit, that's where it is. You just sit up.
May I continue, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Are these actions by those individuals information? Are they trying some type of influence? Is what they're saying information or influence? The answers are visible to those with indiscriminate vision and the courage to challenge this allegation to pontifications and posturing and unprofessional actions on their part. Everybody's got an opinion. Everybody has the right to speak. I don't have a right to say to anybody in front of me or behind me, sit down, but knowing where that comes from, I understand it. It appears to me that all one needs to do is look into those supposed allegations.
You live in Blue Island, you live in Chicago. That's where it comes to come out. Yeah, he has a right to speak.
Please, go ahead.
What I do at times is bring some of the videos out in front of people I know that make decisions that could get in jail, that can investigate you, and the only result is I have a $50 or $60 dinner bill and a number of people sitting and laughing at some of the talk that goes along in here. In closing, maybe some of us all should remember that BS in many instances is just chewed-up grass that's still wet, and be careful and don't step in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Excuse me, Marshaling, 2260 to 120th Place, Blue Island.
Yes.
This is a requirement that you, Mayor, have us do when we come to the mic. Maybe I missed it, but the gentleman that just spoke, I did not hear his name nor his address.
I think there's.
And I'd like to know, is he a Blue Island resident?
Let me just.
Let me first ask my question.
Go ahead. I know where you're going.
If he is not a Blue Island resident, I don't understand, why is he up here making comments about what's going on in Blue Island? Can you address that, please?
I think there was legislation passed recently to remind me whether or not you don't have to state your address or name.
Correct.
That's the reason why it's not, that's why I don't bring it up anymore.
You don't bring it up anymore?
Correct.
So what I'd like to know is, I'm truly confused here. What is his interest in the going-ons in Blue Island? Can that be explained? I am a Blue Island resident, and I'd like to know.
Maybe you're gonna ask.
Sir? Oh, sir? Oh, okay. He's not talking to me. I'm the Blue Island resident. How ignorant.
He is the fifth ward's assistant, Johnny Ringo Neil. That's his assistant. He represents for all of them.
I think it's been a lot of confusion, and I think Johnny Ringo gave him a title that, as far as I'm concerned, is not important. The people here, they either. I think it's been a lot of confusion and I think Johnny Ringo gave him a title that as far as I'm concerned, it's not important. The people here, they either homeowners, they live in Blue Island. Why is it our concern? We pay property tax. Why is it our concern? When they sue Blue Island, it come out our pockets. Our property tax go up. That's why it's our business. Why are people coming up here telling what's going on? Because these are the people who supposed to be representing us. And when they make decision, whether it's nay or yea, we pay for them. So if we want to question the reason why they made that decision, I think that's our right. You know? And you can't tell a citizen, a person who paying the property tax, the person who put the people in the position that they don't have a right to stress what they found out. It's a lot of things that's going on here and the only way you're gonna be able to deal with is bring it out in the public. Let everybody know what's going on. Stop hiding behind personal meetings and making decisions for the city and then say we're fools, you know? That's why everybody upset. You don't live here, you don't own property, you don't know what I'm talking about.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, mayor and council. I've lived in Blue Island twenty-nine years. This is new information to me that I just heard Ms. Orozco say. And if this is true, Alderman Ringo, and I'm not gonna put you on the spot here tonight, but I like to go on record as saying, if this is true that you hired this gentleman who just said he's not talking to me, I don't understand the purpose.
Do I have to question?
I don't, I, wait. I don't understand the purpose, I'm trying to talk to Alderman Ringo here. I don't understand the purpose, if that's true, that you hired someone from Chicago to come and speak on behalf of Blue Island. That doesn't make sense to me. Now maybe, and I don't pretend to know it all, but I would like at some point for you to explain that, if that's true, as to why you did that. And out of all the residents in Blue Island, why would you have to go outside of Blue Island to get someone? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else?
Mayor, city council, good evening. Mayor, I'm here to redress my government. It's been talked about this evening about the Sergeant Harrow lawsuit and that is a tragedy. And what I'm asking again tonight is for the city to go after those who are responsible versus like Mike Cornell, businessman Ed Burns and others. Let's go after them and have them pay this lawsuit. Let's strip Mike Cornell of his police powers and others who have took part in this act. City council, city attorney, when will the suspect in this case be brought to justice? When will he be brought to justice? The people deserve justice here in Blue Island. And Alderman Kazaras, congratulations on your election and your power. You have a lot of power here to make decisions. And we're asking you tonight to open up the investigation of who murdered your old friend, Carlos Solgado. Use your power and resources to find out. We need closure on this case also. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Now to move on to mayor's announcements. Go to number one. It's a mayor's veto message and Alderman should have a copy of it and I'll read it as follows. This is regarding resolution number 2019-033 and it reads as follows. I am vetoing resolution number 2019-033, a resolution of the city of Blue Island County of Cook, Illinois, appointing former Assistant U.S. Attorney Sergio Acosta and Ackerman LLP as a legislative counsel solely for the purpose of conducting an independent investigation into purchase of two Chevrolet Tahoe motor vehicles in 2018 and advising the council on the legality of the circumstances surrounding the purchase pursuant to section 30.06 of the city of Blue Island Code of Ordinances. I will not sign said resolution because I disagree with the resolution as adopted. In additionally, let me add this. From my understanding, Sergio Acosta, Attorney Sergio Acosta, hired a new lawyer, I won't mention his name, highly prominent former judge. That judge and I have known each other for thirty-one years. In fact, that judge reached out to me late last week and I'm just letting the council know that that could be a conflict or is a conflict of interest.
Mr. Clerk, can we make sure that gets the right, it's on our next city council?
Well, it's a resolution.
Okay.
I just want to make sure it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Let me move on. On a much happier note, and I'm gonna use the article that was in shared news, hopefully you've all seen it. On my old block, there's a gentleman who on October 30th, and I say a gentleman, will be celebrating his one-hundredth birthday. And I'm gonna read it verbatim because it covers everything and I'm pretty sure Sandy Martinez and all the Martinises had something to do with making sure this was all correct. And it reads as follows. Happy one-hundredth birthday, quotation marks, Uncle. Senovio Howard Martinez was born on October 30th, 1919 in Blue Island, Illinois. He was the second eldest of five children born to Maria and Celso Martinez. His parents came to the United States during the Mexican Revolution. His childhood was much like most kids growing up in Blue Island. Remarkably, his nieces and nephews attended the same schools as he did and played in the same parks. After graduating high school, Senovio worked at the Rock Island Rail Yard in Blue Island. His job included maintenance of stations along the tracks. Senovio would sweep stations and remove snow. He later lost his job as did others with the onset of the Great Depression. Senovio, fondly nicknamed Uncle, was drafted into the United States Army to serve in World War II. And this is critical and very important. He received training and became a U.S. Army glider. During his time served, his commanding officer was Audrey Murphy, best portrayed in the movie To Hell and Back. He is very proud of his Army days serving his God and country. He believes the draft gave his life a sense of direction and adventure. Uncle has shared many amazing stories of sad and happy experiences during the war, including his time at the Vatican and capping in the former Olympic residence made of marble. In closing, Uncle wanted to let people know that one of the highlights of his life was seeing the Cubs win the pennant. Happy one-hundredth birthday, Uncle. May your special day bring you all the love and celebration beyond your wishes. Again, as mayor of the city of Blue Island and all of you, I want to give him a big round of applause. We will try to get him here as quickly as possible, but let's give him a round of applause And another piece of information, as I have been informing the council, on October the 28th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. in Schaumburg, Illinois, will be the pre-construction notice or planning regarding the Western Avenue Bridge. So I just want to give you that heads up. It does say here, bridge rehab and painting on the bridge. Again, we're gonna look into the painting, whether or not there's an additional cause for the paint blue and we'll go from there. Alderman, go ahead.
Painting's on the multi-year plan for 2021 to 2025.
Okay.
That was released yesterday. There's a lot of Blue Island money that got released yesterday.
Okay, so we'll see, hopefully we can do it as all the bridges, Blue Island blue. City clerk?
Yeah, one item, you're evening the, you're either.
Go ahead.
Need a motion to approve trunk or treat on Highland Avenue between Bar Oak and Walnut on October 27th, 2019 from 11:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Need a motion by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Hill, aye. Cantellos Omen?
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Clinker?
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander?
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato?
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis?
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwell?
Aye.
Farrenwell, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you. Any bids?
No bids, your honor.
City treasurer?
Thank you, your honor. I apologize for the Alderman not having the treasurer's report, but due to the circumstances of the issue with the computers, as we all know, hopefully by next council meeting I should have both September and October treasurer's report. At this point also, I'd like to bring up Paul from Foster and Foster to make a presentation on the actuarial report. This is for the fire and police pension, which will give us more insight for the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Paul Bakker, I'm representing Foster and Foster. We are the actuarial consultants for the police and fire pension boards and we've recently completed our actuarial evaluations for both plans. I believe copies are in front of you. I've just been asked to come and provide some highlights as you all are making decisions on contributions to make to both of the funds. I will speak to both of them, but they are exactly the same, just different plans. So if I refer to one page, it's gonna be the exact same page in the other plan. So I'm gonna go into a little bit of detail on the police plan and then be able to go through the fire plan much more quickly because they're very similar in the results. So a few things I'm gonna highlight tonight, really start on page five. I'm gonna start with the police plan like I mentioned. So on page five, you see there in the left-hand column, the city recommended contribution that we have determined for 2019 is approximately $2.4 million. You can see right to the right of that, the contribution we've recommended last year was $2.2 million, so we've increased about two point, or about $200,000 from one year.
The numbers are different here.
I'm sorry?
We have a different, we have a different.
Are you in the police pension plan?
We're on page five.
But are you in the police plan?
Those ones are separate.
Yeah, there's two plans and they both would have something on page five. So if you're in the police plan on page five, you can see that we're recommending a contribution of about $2.4 million this year. That's about $200,000 higher than last year. If you were to take the time to read through the rest of this page, we highlight the real reason for that contribution or the increase in the contribution from last year. It's really twofold. One is a change in assumptions, the other is just experience of the plan. So let me take a second to talk about that because at least the assumptions will apply to both plans. The assumptions, we feel, are very solid. The one thing that's happened from last year to this year is a release of a new mortality table. The Society of Actuaries does these studies every five to 10 years. This was the first study that they've done using public pension data with the result that actually resulted in a public safety mortality table. So this is the best available information. We've applied it to all of our Illinois plans and expect all public pension plans to be using this very soon. So we've already reflected it for your plans. That was the biggest driver of the cost increase. The other for the police plan is just the unfavorable experience. That's summarized in the next paragraph on page five. Really, the key driver is there is just underperformance of the assets versus what we were expecting and then just different experience as far as the members themselves. We didn't have as many inactive members who are receiving payments die. It's not a real fun thing to talk about, but you sort of expect a certain amount of death each year and our assumption didn't line up with that. The other, we had a lot more retirements from the police group than we had expected. So all that experience sort of bubbled up into the contribution going up about $200,000. Also wanted to take a minute, if you can turn in the same report to page 22. This is a new page we've added, but you can see this bottom, it shows a history of the funded ratio for this plan. These same kinds of assumption changes and poor experience translate to the funded ratio as well. So you can see over the last four years, really your funded ratio has grown slightly, but we're still rounding to 30% for all four years. So we're making some progress. If we are reaching those assumptions and funding as we had hoped, this would be growing even further, but it is what it is at this point. So the last thing that Carmine asked me to speak to was on page 15. So you may be aware that we've been stressing this is our recommended contribution. It deviates from what the state requires you to fund. In the fact, the biggest factor, if you look on page 15, you can see down at the bottom, we've highlighted a couple assumptions and methods that are different. The key there being that the state requirements are trying to fund this plan to 90%, whereas any reasonable actuary, I think, would not consider that a reasonable approach. Our approach, our recommended contribution is trying to fund this plan to 100% so that all benefits can be covered over that 22-year period that we're amortizing the unfunded. So that's really what I wanted to hit on the police plan. Any questions before I switch to the fire? Okay. Like I said, a lot of this is gonna be very similar just because the police and fire are in very similar positions, they're being impacted by similar things, so it will not take very long to go through this plan. So if you switch to the fire report and go to page five, this will be the numbers for this plan. So round it again, the current year contributions are right around $1.5 million. Last year was 1.5 if you round two, but they were about $90,000 different. We're seeing an increase of $90,000. The key driver here is just those assumption change. Same kind of mortality, just applied to this plan. If you go down to that next paragraph talking about the plane experience, you actually had some good experience for the firefighters' plan. We've got, we got the inactive mortality we were expecting. The salary increases were lower than we expected, but we had that same kind of investment return below what we would expect. So that's another factor that, like we talked before, if you go to page 22 and look at that funded ratio, the fire plan's actually going down instead of staying flat like the police plan was. It was 25% in 2016, now it's about 22.6. It's going down. Part of that's just experience, part of it's assumptions, but the plan is currently 23% funded. And as a result, these contributions are pretty significant to try to make up that difference over the 22 years that the state requires us to fund it over. Okay, so that is really what I wanted to share at a high level. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Go ahead.
Paul, how, so I recently, the governor proposed or announced a proposal to combine all the suburban and downstate police pension plans. I figured you might not be in support of that. But is there?
Speaking for my firm, I don't know if we, I don't think we have strong feelings for it, but I don't want to make a report on behalf of my firm. I think our concern is just sort of share some of the IPPFA's feedback of just if we want to consolidate, let's make sure we're doing it on a reasonable basis. Yes, a lot of these Blue Island and other pension funds are underperforming statewide and other measures, but some of that's built into the legislation that they are, you're only allowed to invest in certain funds and as a result, you're gonna have a lower return. So if you look at things apples to apples, there certainly is a benefit of pulling your money together, you can get the lower fees and those kind of things. Whether you really want to have state control versus local control, I mean in my, this is my opinion, that's really what it comes down to is, yes, we could benefit, but at the end of the day, there might be other ways we could benefit rather than just having the state come in and seize up all the plans.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Great, thank you.
And now we'd like to call up the library director, please, for a presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas, city council and council members here. Thank you for inviting me to share with you about some of the wonderful things going on at the public library. As you know, I started as library director this past August and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve you all. The library staff are truly a wonderful team and I look forward to working with them on continuing to improve the library services and collections. Library is a very busy and well-utilized public amenity with nearly 250,000 visitors in 2018 and on track to match that record in 2019. In September alone, the library circulated over 5,500 items and in addition to our physical usage, patrons have downloaded over 3,600 ebooks and audiobooks so far in 2019. Our facility is popular with other local library patrons as well, with 623 reciprocal viewers recorded just in September. In addition to traditional library services such as storytimes, book clubs and computer the south suburbs, such as our technology annex, which contains a recording studio, 3D printer, VR headsets, and more. The library also boasts a maker space for DIY programs and projects. Wi-Fi hotspots are available for your use at home, or you can travel with them if you have a work project. And our conference room is regularly utilized by local community groups and available for reservation through the business office. This past spring, Blue Island Public Library received a grant from Best Buy, which awarded $4,000 towards technology-driven teen programming and tech fairs. Blue Island Public Library's tech annex provided exposure for technology gadgets, interactive educational toys, and virtual reality headsets. In 2020, funded items will be added to our non-traditional checkout collection, which allows patrons to take technology home through the Library of Things project. And this Library of Things allows people to take things home, like we have a cordless drill or one of those monitors to check for drafts around your house that you can just borrow, use once, and take back instead of having to purchase that item. Speaking of technology, the library has subscribed to a database this past spring called Canopy, which provides streaming thousands of popular and educational videos, and the service is available through an app for your smartphone or other smart devices. You can stop by the adult services desk if you need any help with that. We have Spanish-language outreach programming, which continues to hold English-language classes, knitting group, English conversation group, and a variety of craft programs in Spanish. We've recently added a bilingual storytime, and which has a growing audience in our children's In the coming year, plans have been put in place to offer new programs and services to the Blue Island community. Through a grant from Age Options, the library will be hosting a series of programs and services specifically for seniors in the community. And the goals of this programming are to reduce social isolation and ensure that seniors in the community are active participants in the life of the community. And through these funds, we plan to offer a variety of presentations on history and culture and other topics. The Blue Island Library is preparing to help citizens participate in the upcoming federal census. Correct accounting of all the individuals residing in Blue Island is very important as a lot of state and federal funding for projects is often based on population counts. The census counts are initially going to be done electronically, and the library is going to be ready to meet that need by making available a designated computer station for census takers. Library staff will be available to assist patrons as needed, as they always are with the computers during regular hours. In 2020, the library building celebrates its 50th anniversary. The building continues to serve its constituents very well, and we hope to be able to fund some much-needed maintenance for the building in the coming years as the facilities are aging. Through a generous donation from the Brienzo family, the library will be replacing our original exterior light-up sign with a new yellow one that incorporates the library book tree logo, and it's going to be mounted on the front of the building in just the coming weeks. And so I'm really proud to making that project come to fruition because I understand it's been several months, nearly a year, in the making. So we're going to have a little reception for the Brienzo family in the coming weeks once we have a date set from the sign company. So we'll let you know about that when it happens. Additional exterior maintenance is planned for the coming year, including a cleaning and tuck pointing of the stonework and some new landscaping, we hope. The cleaning of the stonework should take place fairly shortly, and it's funded through that Brienzo donation. And also, we're planning to fund the tuck pointing through grants from the state. The Friends Group is working on securing funding for landscaping through a private grantee, and then we're also hoping to use those state funds to do some work on our HVAC systems. The library is on track to stay within budget at the coming fiscal close thanks to the hard work of the amazing library staff and volunteers, who are always coming up with creative ways to improve library services on a low budget. Our most recent board meeting was very productive. Through a correspondence with the city, we drafted and then got approved our levy and also our budget. So the levy was approved on October 16 meeting, and I gave a copy to Mr. Heiser there. Our most recent audit is available on our website at blueislandlibrary.org, and also the agendas and minutes of recent board meetings from recent years. The library invites members of the public to attend the meetings held on the third Wednesday of each month in the library conference room at 7:00 p.m. Agendas for upcoming meetings are posted online and on the library bulletin board in the entrance. The library does await appointment of a new trustee following the resignation of trustee Castillo, and we hope that the mayor will be able to make an appointment shortly. And the board invites all interested members of the public to approach Mayor Vargas regarding becoming a member of the board. Lastly, the library would like to invite the public to our annual open house reception following the holiday-light parade on Saturday, December 7. The reception is hosted by the Friends of the Library at 6:00 p.m., and we're going to do a lighting of the tree. We're going to have holiday music followed by the choral airs and some refreshments, some hot chocolate. The Friends Group is collecting raffle baskets from community organizations, and the winning tickets will be drawn at the reception. So we'll have the raffle baskets out starting November 1st and will be available all throughout the month. Okay? Thank you again for the opportunity to share with you all about the library. I look forward to a productive working relationship with the city to provide library services, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank you for sending over a copy of the post-levy. I reviewed it and passed it on to our CPA, and hopefully within a week or so, if there's anything, we're going to reach out, maybe have a meeting or discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The only thing that I have on my agenda is that... The only other thing I have recommended, I'd like to have an executive session for possible litigation in the future, if that's possible.
We'll mention it. Go ahead, Alderman.
Yeah. I would like to address your question. I don't feel that I have to ask permission for anyone that's volunteering to help me. Ms. Thompson, Ms. Rochelle, and some of you guys causing this chaos, and I've sit here and watched this from time after time. You get up here and you talk stuff. Why don't you guys try to work with me? It's going to come in, it's causing problems. You're never going to get anything done by doing what you're doing. Point blank.
Thank you.
Well, I have no problem working with you, Johnny. Just like I told you before while you was campaigning, I don't have a problem working with you, but I will hold you accountable.
I expect you to hold me accountable, and I expect to hold you accountable.
Uh, yes, hold me accountable as a citizen, but I'm telling you right now, every...
You don't have to tell me.
You haven't contacted us. How can we work with somebody that's not faithful? Now, Mike been over there and communicating with the...
Ms. Rochelle.
I can't work with a ghost.
Ms. Rochelle, we're going to have to keep that. Thank you. Alderman. Alderman.
That's not my job, is yours?
No more of this. That was up for public comment. We're moved on. Please.
City Attorney?
No report, Your Honor.
Committee reports, committee development committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We met at a regular meeting, and I sent the minutes over to our billing department, but I don't have them in front of me. I will have them at the full next council, but just to give a quick summary, we approved some grant applications, so that's a good program that we got going here in the city, and we approved some tentative agreements. One was Kathy's flowers for nuances and tuck pointing and windows. And we also discussed Census 2020. Thank you, Anna from the library. We have several names that were sent to us, one from the mayor's office, two that were sent to me. I believe Anna from the library wanted to sit on there also, so we have several names. Dave is in the audience here, and Sofia Aguilara from your office, and Nubia Chavez, who reported, sent the name to me, and Anna from the library so far. We need some more names, though.
I have probably another gentleman who would...
No problem. We're thinking seven to nine people, and then we can get going and have the census come out and do some training to get the outreach, and we can all work together to get a good count. So that was discussed. We continued on the table discussing the nuisance policy, if we're going to do something like that for nuisance properties, power that was given to non-home rule communities to go after properties that are ongoing nuisance. It's been in my committee for several months. It's probably be for a few more months before it goes to the full council. The billing department's still doing reviews and revisions and opinions on that. We discussed Alderman Farinwald's recommendation for public walkway improvements, for waiving of fees. The billing department's also writing up a policy to handle situations like that. I think the last I heard was for flat work excluding water work, but that's also in the policy. It's in the works to be coming to the full council soon. That's just a rough, it wasn't as long normally. It was about a two-hour meeting. Our next regular meeting is November 13th. However, I might reschedule that and do a meeting combination, public hearing about the cannabis. I mentioned also the Alderman, I mean Attorney Burke, that I'll be reaching out to her so that we can get going and moving on that if we're going to do that. So that's all my report right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. The meeting, Finance Committee met October 16th. Meeting was called to order by Chairman Kevin Donahue at 6:04 p.m. Roll call was taken. Alderman Donahue, Bellato, and Alexander were in attendance. Absent were Alderman Johnson and Alderman Klinker. Also in attendance was Executive Assistant to the Mayor, Marisol Barrera, City Treasurer, Carmine Bellato, Fire Chief Dan Rita, Police Chief Bernie Arzab, City Engineer Eric Alvarez, and Alan Stevo. The committee first took up accounts payable for the week of 10/23 in the amount of $457,960.58. There's a motion made by Alderman Bellato and a second made by Alderman Alexander. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable for the week of 10/23.
You got a motion? Do you have a second? Second by Alderman, Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
We, the committee then heard an update and had brief discussion regarding the 2020 proposed TIF projects. The committee then heard a presentation from City Engineer Eric Alvarez regarding Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Low Interest Loan Water Project. This project consists of performing complete interior and exterior painting of the Thornton Elevated Water Tank, the construction of approximately 720 feet of new eight-inch water main with 22 associated lead service removal replacements. This would be happening at 121st Place and Highland Avenue. Both streets will also be reconstructed in the entirety as well. There also would be removal and replacement of all 5,419 existing water meters in the city with new water meters, and then replacement of approximately 236 lead service lines with new copper service lines from the shut-off at the water main to the water main inside the residence. This work will actually occur in the northwest part of town, located between Artesian Avenue and then moving to the west to the railroad tracks, and then 121st Place and moving north to 119th Street. These proposed projects will be financed with two loans from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Public Water Supply Water Program, a loan totaling $7,914,000, sorry, $7,914,998 with an estimated interest rate of 2% for a 20-year period. It would have an annual repayment plan of approximately $480,488. The second loan would be for $2 million, and if the city to receive this loan by June 30th, 2020, the loan would be eligible for principal forgiveness up to 100% of the initial loan amount with a maximum amount of $2 million. This loan program is for projects whose main focus is lead service line replacement. There is a motion to approve by Alderman Alexander and a second made by Alderman Bellato. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. Excuse me. Mr. Alvarez then provided a presentation on the engineering estimate for the CDB demolition of 11955 Vincent's Road. The engineering estimate is approximately $13,500. There's a motion to approve made by Alderman Alexander and a second made by Alderman Bellato. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. Mr. Alvarez had one more item before the committee, and that was that a CDB subrecipient agreement for the Collins Street resurfacing. The city was awarded $280,000 in CDBG funds to resurface Collins Street. There's a local match of $181,200. There's discussion about if MFT funds could be used to pay for the local match, and Mr. Alvarez stated at this time, it's not possible, but going forward, the city will be using more MFT funds for local matches. There's a motion made by Alderman Bellato and a second made by Alderman Alexander. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. I believe this is item...
Number three.
Number three on the, under the Finance Committee agenda, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Get a motion, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions?
Just to clarify for public, it's Western Avenue to Vincent's Avenue. Collins Avenue from Western to Vincent's.
Motion, second. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Before the committee adjourned, public comment was reopened up. Mr. Stevo read a statement from Mrs. Carol Green, and then Mr. Stevo also provided his own public comments to the committee. There's a motion to adjourn made by Alderman Alexander and a second by Alderman Bellato. The committee was adjourned at 6:51 p.m. The next Finance Committee meeting will be October 28, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. And I have two more items. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll for October 4, 2019 for $471,779.19.
There's a motion, there was second by Alderman Rita. Any questions? Just go ahead.
It's higher than one. Could you just explain why? I honestly, I don't. They didn't have this because of the computer issues. We didn't have a chance to review it until I got the packet on. Is this two? No, it would be two. There's, oh, actually, I do, there's actually fire retro pay on this. There's, right, is this the one for fire? There's fire retro, and that's why it's higher. Sorry, I did have this one.
Any other questions? Now roll call.
Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye.
Alexander, aye, sorry. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinwald.
Aye.
Farinwald, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Then the last item I have is an ordinance approving the water supply agreement between the city of Blue Island and the village of Posen. I'd like to make a motion to approve. With that being said, I know this started in the municipal service committee, and it's been in the Finance Committee pretty much all summer moving into the fall, so I'd be happy to try and answer any questions the best I can.
You got a motion? Do we have a second by Alderman Bellato? Any questions? Alderman Farrenwald.
So the, the starting rate is five dollars per thousand gallons?
Yes, that's correct.
And I'm, I'm not working off of direct knowledge, but I understand the city engineer had recommended a higher amount of five dollars and eighty-some cents or something like that. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So the city engineer has provided an estimate, and then also the city finance department and our accountant, Dave Myers, through his CPA firm also provided an estimate that was lower, and this was kind of the combined negotiated go-between for both of them. Through both different ones.
It was between 480, I'm sorry. Go ahead. 480 and 580 or something like that was the starting rate, was totaled by three different departments. And, and the city engineer's estimate, or 580, whatever it was, I guess I'm just asking why, I guess I would like to see the city realize the maximum possible revenue out of this, so why didn't they go with that?
We've, we negotiated a lot on this, and like we said, we had three different estimates. There was the really low estimate, the higher estimate, and this was kind of the middle, the middle of the ground estimate.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Do you know how much they're paying for Harvey?
I believe they pay like $12 to Harvey, to the receiver.
$12? $12, and I got the S5?
I, I think. Is that, is that what, or is it?
$12 is what they're paying? Oh, their total?
Their total bill is right now, the total Posen bill. I don't know what, what they pay.
Seven bucks?
Their total, so the, and their total bill is 12, so in the Village of Posen, their total bill's $12 and whatever, $12 and some cents.
The residents?
The residents are paying, yeah. Because they're paying such a high rate to Harvey because of Harvey's financial woes, the Village of Homewoods bailing on Harvey, East Hazel Crass who purchases their water through Homewoods, bailing on, on Harvey. Posen would be the next.
So do we know what they expect, what Posen expects to be charging their residents?
The combined rate Posen is paying is $14,002, and that was with the comparison that was completed by Myers and Rosell in the comparison study that you all received.
And they wouldn't change that? I guess I would not. They said they're not going to change that. They have to cover the expense of building the multimillion-dollar facility to pump and chlorinate the water from us. I just, I just wouldn't want to see Posen residents paying less than Blue Island residents. Our residents pay eight bucks or something, seven or eight dollars total with our fees.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I have what Robinson basically projected. For 17, again, the projections here include depreciation, which, there's good, good ways to figure that in depreciation, but the city doesn't benefit like a regular outside corporation does, right? Depreciation. For 17, it was 445, 457, 457 without the depreciation, and 502 including depreciation. Depreciation was roughly a million dollars broken into per year, okay? For 18, without the depreciation, it was 422, our overall cost. With the depreciation, it was 545.
I'm sorry, I meant quite a following. Whose costs are these? I'm sorry. Whose, whose costs are you talking about? Posen or Blue Island? I'm, I'm sorry, I missed whose cost you're talking about.
These are projected costs for us, for City of Blue Island, and, you know, like I say, 545, 18, and the reason for what, the reason why it's less for 18 than 17, from what I can see here, our overhead and the bill, overall expenditure and the budget was less, and the water was less. So if, the more efficiency we have in our water system, okay, and the less water we use, that number goes down, okay? So in the past years, we lost a lot of businesses, and again, Modern Drop Forge, Parko Cookies, they used more water than a lot of places. So these are the variables. Roughly 18 was 545, okay? Now, their approximate, their approximate usage that they're estimating is 375 to $400,000 a year, 100 per day, excuse me, 375 to 400,000 gallons per day.
Okay.
We roughly use one eight, between one, 1.8 to 10 million gallons a day, okay? If you, if you divide that four into 2 million, it's five times, okay? So if every constituent in Blue Island, every 400,000 gallons that were paid out every, every day, okay, we would get, if we get the dollar, we get, we're getting a dollar, technically it's profit, because there's no cost to us. So it's a dollar profit. It's $149,000 per year right now, effective 220. Whenever they, they would start up, it's roughly $149,000.
Okay, so on this sheet of paper, I, maybe I'm looking at apples to oranges, but it says that the 2020 profit per year will be $61,000.
The 42, the 42 cents is a constant profit every year. The 58 cents is the, that's the factor that's every year is going to increase with the CPI, okay? And then the water, the Chicago charges, right now, we pay 398 per thousand.
Okay.
Okay, that we, either I projected roughly four and then projecting up, whatever the cost, the cost of Chicago is, that's going to be a pass-through, okay? The 58 cents is actually for our infrastructure replacements, and 42 cents is profit. So it's a dollar profit, a dollar that we make on every 400,000 gallons used in the year, and, and the projection there shows how much is collected from Posen and what do you pay, pay out, what's the actual net profit.
So I'm, just, let me repeat back if I understand. So Chicago's rate to us is, I'm looking at the sheet here, $4?
Right now, it's actually, technically for this year, it's 398.
But it'll go to four, okay.
And maybe 3%, we don't know what it is.
And then 58 cents of the...
Is our projected repair, replacement cost.
Okay, so that's money we get to use towards our system.
Yes, for the streets, sewers, any water main, anything with the water department.
All right, and then the 42 cents is the actual just profit.
Yes.
So we charge, Chicago charges us four, we charge Posen five.
Right.
The dollar gets split the way you just described, and we get a profit per year. Here it says of $61,488. That's the actual profit, not counting the, the, towards the, the maintenance or whatever.
Keep in mind, our constituents are paying roughly $8 and some cents, 825 or 836 per thousand.
And I, I just got to ask the...
The profit is $6,014 per thousand gallons.
So what I don't, what I'd like to know myself is, what is Posen going to charge its residents?
I believe as Alderman Bellato is saying, they're going to stay because they're, they're doing a big upgrade into their water system, so they're going to have to pay for the bonds with their water rate. So their water's still going to be that $12, $12.80 or whatever.
Versus our eight?
Our eight, so yeah, so they're still paying significantly more than, than we are.
What would be easier to understand is, we, that's what we build in for profits, but we're not going to fix their lines over there. Yeah. So we're just rolling it over, making them pay it even though we're not going to fix their stuff, so it's a dollar.
Switching to us, it's more, I, I think, a security for them where they're afraid something's going to happen with the city of Harvey, that they're not going to be able to...
Is there any questions? There are City Engineer Eric Alvarez, he's here. Anything?
Yeah.
From the council? Any questions? Why they went at five, was it 580?
Yeah, what, were you involved, Eric, in the preparation?
It goes, it matches that.
Yes, Alderman, I worked on that calculation.
And so you had a recommendation of $5.80, right?
Right.
And why did you recommend that, I guess is my question? Can you explain?
Yeah, and I, so I can answer the method that we use to calculate that.
Mr. Alvarez, could you come to the podium, please? Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, I can explain to you the method that we used to calculate our recommended rate was, what we did was for water years 2017 and 2018, we looked at all of Blue Island's costs to the water department. We tried to subtract out of those costs, the fixed costs to the water department, to leave ourselves with a variable production rate that would scale with the amount of water that actually gets used. Upon that base variable production rate, we then added in a expected service life for each of the city, for each of the City of Blue Island's major water components, like the every 100-year replacement of water mains, every 20-year replacement of meters, every 50-year major renovations to the pump stations, every 20 to 30 years, major renovations to the pumps. So in summary, long story short, it's a variable production rate with a wear and tear, depreciation, whatever you want to call it, an equipment replacement rate, add its recommended service life factored in, and that's how we got to that clause.
Okay, thank you.
In case the water need to go to Posen.
All right, all right. Just move on.
Any, any other questions for you?
I just, I gotta...
Alderman Hill has a question. Go ahead.
Sorry, the hours is ridiculous.
I understand. Go ahead, Ald.
That's, so that's in the ordinance that the Village of Posen's paying for the, the water meter, the, the vaults, all the, the equipment, and it's, it's all laid out in the ordinance, who's, who's responsible, who's putting it in, who's going to maintain it.
As a tear cost.
That's it, yeah, it says it's all on the purchaser, and in the definition section, it identifies Posen as the purchaser.
So, you know, I gotta say, I, I really, I, I think this is a good idea, and I appreciate the work you've put into it, and I think you've worked hard on it. I, I just, I gotta say, I don't, but Blue Island is in a very difficult financial position, so I, I feel like if the city engineers had a formula that arrived at 585, I don't know why we wouldn't charge them 585. So, as I was saying, we had the, the city's engineer's estimate, we had the city accountant,
Dave Myers's firm's estimate, and then the Village of Posen gave us an estimate, and the Village of Posen was on the, the low end. The city engineer was the higher end, and this was the middle one, and, and this was where the committee decided to land.
It wasn't, the mayor was here for multiple finance meetings, said it wasn't feasible because he's putting...
The mayor of Posen was there, not me.
No, 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 no. I said the mayor, mayor of Posen was there. Well, going back, it was sent to us by the mayor's office and our finance director to work on this, this issue, and, and it's, by all counts, the mayor's office, the finance director, finance, it's profit for the city. They're shopping around. It's, you know, it's not only us they're going to talk to. So part of negotiations was, where it's feasible for them, they're not going to change their resident fees, and we're making money for the city, so that's where the numbers came from. We took the middle, we literally took the middle of the ground between the three different prices. So it's up to the council if they want to do this. There's no, you want to make extra money, we make extra money. It's not...
There's a motion, there's a second. Any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
I'm going to say no.
Clinker, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Farrenwald.
I respectfully vote no.
Farrenwald, no. Seven, three.
You know what? I'm going to vote on this one also, no.
It fails seven to four.
If I might say, if we could... Randy, we're not expending funds on this, so does it need eight?
That's not true.
No, the motion fails, it has to have eight ayes.
It's not expanding.
If it could come back at 585, I vote yes.
Can I, can I make a motion to send this to committee, like, to resend this to committee?
If reassigned to Finance Committee, or...
Yes.
I'd like to make that motion to reassign it to Finance.
Motion's a second. All in favor?
Who's the second?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
No, that's fine. Who was the second?
I think Alderman.
I think Alderman.
Farrenwald. Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Alderman?
Uh, no, that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety Committee?
We had a meeting last Wednesday. I do not have the report typed up yet. I'll have it by the next meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for, I'll have the report by the next council meeting. Our next Public Health and Safety is November 19th, 6:00 PM. Back there.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
Nothing?
We have a couple of ordinances.
I don't know. I'm not on it.
I can read it if you...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm on the committee. I just, I wasn't at this meeting.
I'll just, I'll read them, and that's fine.
The city clerk read it.
So I didn't know if it was appropriate.
That's fine. I need a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-046, an ordinance prohibiting parking of motor vehicles on the west side of Chatham Avenue between its intersection with Vermont Street on the north and Fulton Street on the south, and the City of Blue Island providing penalties for the violation thereof.
So they have a motion by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Cosidas. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, we need a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-047, an ordinance establishing residential permit parking of motor vehicles on the east side of Chatham Street between its intersection with Vermont Street on the north and Fulton Street on the south, and the City of Blue Island providing penalties for the violation thereof.
Same Alderman, Casas, and Alderman Bellato?
Sure.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, we need a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-047, an ordinance establishing residential permit parking of motor vehicles on the east side of Chatham Street between its intersection with Vermont Street on the north and Fulton Street on the south, and the City of Blue Island providing penalties for the violation thereof.
Same Alderman, Casas, and Alderman Bellato?[1442.41]
He stands by honest first responders. Art Howard stated he has attended many meetings in his day, and that certain individuals in Blue Island forget about decorum and respect to officials, and this behavior hinders new businesses and is an embarrassment. He thanked and complimented Chair Rita for her hard work and dedication. Nancy Thompson responded, asking if Mr. Howard was referring to her, and that if he was, had something to say, that they should take it outside, and there would be a stop to it. Alderman Will Casares inquired about the Chatham Street parking ordinance. We had the State Farm demand letter, the packet was lacking information, committee needs more information. Claim for USASO Tommy Clevinger, packet was lacking information, committee needs more information. Property damage claims, twenty nineteen, twenty-one oh eight, motion to deny payment of the property claim, claim damage in the amount of three thousand dollars made by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Cantello Zileman. Voice vote, yes, by Alderman Hill, no, no vote by Chair Rita, motion carried to deny the payment. So I don't need to put that in a formal motion, right?
However you'd like to do it, we can do it at the end with all three of them, if you like.
Since it was, since it failed. Correct? Okay. Twenty nineteen, twenty-two thirty-six, motion to make payment of the property damage claim in the amount of three hundred and eighty dollars was made by Alderman Cantello Zileman, second by Alderman Holly. Voice vote, all in favor, motion carried to pay the property damage claim in the amount of three hundred and eighty dollars. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Motion is second, Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Oh, wait a minute, it didn't find, it didn't fail. Okay. Twenty nineteen, one twenty-seven eighteen, motion to deny payment of the property damage claim in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-four cents by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Cantello Zileman. Voice vote with Alderman Hill voting yes, Chair Rita voting no, motion carried to deny payment. I misspoke when I said it failed in committee, I mean, it went through to deny the payment. So, do I make that in a formal motion? No. Okay. Next, garbage receptacle ordinance, discussion regarding the implementation of a twenty-four-hour rule to put your garbage can away after garbage day, that there were many complaints by constituents that cans are left in the street and not put away. Also, that it takes up parking spots, it is unsightly, it disrupts public works for street cleaning and snow plowing. Alderman Holly and Rita agreed this was discussed previously and believed this ordinance was already done. Chair Rita, Chair Rita checked with Clerk Hauser, who reported it was never done. Motion to amend chapter fifty of the Code of Blue Island, Illinois, regarding the pickup and storage of garbage receptacles was made, made by Alderman Cantello Zileman, second by Alderman Hill. Voice vote, all in favor, motion carried. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Give a motion, second Alderman Tom Holly. Any questions? Go ahead.
My question is, I'm mostly concerned with the, the people at this ordinance, my impact, which are the folks that have issues getting out there within twenty-four hours, such as the elderly or the disabled. What, what are the penalties, penalties that we're looking at for, for folks that are found in violation of the-
We didn't actually put any penalties in the ordinance, but we certainly can, if you want.
Well, I would like to respectfully leave it as is, because I don't want, once again, an elderly or a disabled to inherit those payments. I know many, possibly some folks in the audience might even have the need to have other folks, more people, by, people come out to help with the trash. So for those folks, I would like to start that discussion.
It just, it states that you, you just have, you have to put your garbage can away.
Okay, I, I respect that.
It didn't specifically say that you will get fined five hundred dollars.
As long, as long as our, our elderly or disabled are not getting fined, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second. Are we ready, Mr. Clerk? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zilman.
Aye.
Cantello Zilman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadis.
Aye.
Casadis, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Alderman?
Uh, yes, and then we had the Chatham Street residential parking, motion to approve an ordinance prohibiting parking on the west side of Chatham between Vermont and Fulton Street, and establishing residential permit parking on the east side of Chatham between Vermont and Fulton Street, was made by Alderman Cantello Zileman, second by Alderman Hill. Voice vote, all in favor, motion carried, but that was under Municipal Services. Also, we had Canal Street residential permit parking, a motion to approve and send to Municipal Services Committee and ordinance establishing residential permit parking on the south side of Canal Street between the intersection of Hoin and Chicago Street, which was made by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Cantello Zileman. Voice vote, all in favor, motion carried to pass to Municipal Services. Adjournment, with there being no further business to discuss, motion to adjourn at eight sixteen p.m., made by Alderman Hill, second by Alderman Cantello Zileman. Voice vote, all in favor, meeting adjourned. Next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty nineteen, at seven p.m. in the East Annex.
Thank you very much. Any Aldermanic announcements or comments? Alderman?
I had one more thing, if someone wanted, or the council wanted a copy of the project plan for that IEPA loan, I have a, I have a nice copy of it right here. This one, it includes the audit, though, so that's why it's, it's a lot bigger than it is, but it's like twenty pages, so if anyone on the council would like a copy, I have it. Thank you.
Alderman Casares?
I want to bring up another trash issue, it's really a trashy month for me. I want, I want my fellow Aldermen to start taking note and collecting, take basically, taking, taking the top.
Sure.
I'm going to ask my Alderman and, my fellow Aldermen to start taking notes regarding our issues with our, our current receptacle trash company. I've had a couple issues with Lake Shore in this month, and prior to that, I've had a couple more issues, and I want everyone else here to begin logging our issues, so when that contract goes out to bid, again, we have some documents ready for us to help us make that decision again. That is all.
Thank you very much. Alderman Bellato, any questions? You had a-
Um, sure. I'd like to invite Matt Ingersoll from Montana Welsh to give an update. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Today, after the announcement from Quorum, Alderman Bellato asked us to reach out to Representative Rita's office to see an update on the status of the negotiations between, to get a new facility operator into the, into the hospital space. And he shared that there's the consultant that's representing, representing the city in these efforts, representing, working with him in these efforts, that basically, the, there's, there's two providers that are interested, and that negotiations with them are ongoing. He did share that the, the operator expressed a little bit of concern with the city getting involved now, concern that it may impact, adversely impact the negotiations, and then also just recommended that the city look at the potential costs to the city to operating the hospital in the event that it did acquire the property.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other, Alderman? Anybody? Go ahead, Alderman.
Sunday at two o'clock to four o'clock is Blue Island's trunk or treat. We have probably about thirty-two vehicles participating, we have three or four food vendors, and we have free hayrides, so come on out between two and four at Memorial Park on Sunday.
Thank you very much. Alderman?
We have another tree planting coming up this week on Thursday at Hart Park at nine a.m., and volunteers are needed. This will complete another year, probably get another hundred trees in, close to it anyway. Val Kehoe has been, again, spearheading it, got us some extra trees at the last minute, so they're going to the fifth, fourth, and I think there's a couple going to the second or the first awards. And fellow Aldermen, next spring, will be doing more, will be looking for maybe another location to basis from, so we'll be giving that some thought, and keep the city green.
Thank you very much.
It's Thursday at nine a.m. at Hart Park.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mayor.
I forgot to mention, I gave every, I didn't do for every of them, but I gave every, every two Aldermen one of revenue and expenditure report from January ending September thirtieth. I'm pointing out to the, the area, current period, as you can look on there, and you look down, there's a lot of zeros there. Mr. Myers' firm is in the process of bringing everything up to date as soon as possible, and as soon as we can get more accurate figures for you, we're going to give them to, hopefully by next council, something else, give you more updates, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me take this opportunity, council or council, do you want to give the council an update as to Metro South, of what you know? Go ahead.
So the health facilities planning and review board did meet today, and they did grant Metro South's application. Metro South, their application for exemption, as you may recall, Quorum had filed a lawsuit in circuit court that was, the decision was issued on Friday that basically told the board that they needed to act on their application, and at the, at the hearing today, they did act, and they acted by approving Metro South's application. So, we were present with the attorneys from Benish, and we, you know, had an opportunity to talk with the folks from Quorum, and the lines of communication are open.
Counsel, any additional info?
I just may just briefly just address the council, Mayor, Council. I had a difficult time hearing Mr. Ingersoll. However, if it would be, it would be very helpful if there are communications that are ongoing by, that involve legislative counsel with respect to any matter concerning the legal business of the city. It would be appreciated if they would at least communicate with us, as the city's attorneys, to inform us so that we might be able to impart whatever we might know as well. Additionally, if they're going to prepare an ordinance for this city council to consider, as they did this evening with respect to the garbage receptacles, I realize it's a relatively minor matter, but the first I heard of it was actually this evening. And it would be helpful, again, if we would be able to see those ordinances in advance, if anyone is going to request them to prepare it, so that if there is comment or a need to change something or amend something, that we'd have an opportunity to at least review it prior to the meeting. As to the status of the circumstances concerning the hospital, we did meet with Quorum's representatives today. We were at the hearing this morning. I will tell you that at this point in time, while there may be things going on in discussion, our counsel from Benish had an opportunity to discuss with both, I think it's Third Horizon Strategies, they were brought to your attention at the last meeting, as well as another interested party, his name is Irving Sawyer.
Sawyer, sir.
As of today, nothing definitive had occurred. The Third Horizon Strategies is really not an operator of hospitals, they're more as, I would say, a broker who would attempt to find an interested party or an interested operator to do some type of hospital service. Mr. Sawyer has a different tech, he is a doctor, he has not formulated a, a complete position at this point, but I believe, according to the attorneys from Benish, he has a great deal of sincerity and some significant knowledge with respect to the issues that are being, that we are confronted with here. In terms of any arrangement with Quorum, they are still in a positive mode with the city, however, as of this point in time, we're going to have to sit back and wait for a while before we can do anything concrete, but as Counsel Burke told you, the board acted definitively today to grant the exemption application that Quorum had filed. So we will continue through Benish to attempt to gain more information from these parties who are interested, and again, I would be hopeful that whoever is communicating with legislative counsel would ask them to at least give us the courtesy that we would give them, if we were negotiating something that involved them, to give us the courtesy of telling us what's going on, so that we're not playing a game of mystery, or chess, or checkers, whose move is next. This is a matter which is of great importance to the city, it's of great importance to the residents of the city, it's of great importance to the emergency services of the city, and so I think it's of great importance that we all work together to try and bring something good home for the city. Thank you.
Wait, I have a question.